I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Counselor Howell, would you do a moment of silence?
Moment of silence. Please think about our community members that have passed, and think about our children in our community. We need to give them guidance, we need to really help them out, and have them follow the right path.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, the next item on the agenda is the approval of the agenda. And if I may, just make a note on the consent agenda, item number four, we will need to add, it says Resolution Number 18-33. It should say Approval of Resolution Number 18-33. Number four on the consent. I believe on the website, it is correctly, but it was changed on Monday afternoon, and we just need to make that note.
Which one, four? The number four of your consent. Okay, thank you very much, that's been noted, let's move on.
We need a motion.
What is the pleasure of the board?
Move approval of the agenda as amended.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Libardi Jr., Counselor Casey?
Yes.
Counselor Merrill?
Yes.
Counselor Howell?
Yes.
Have a motion by Counselor Casey, a second by Counselor Howell, and Madam Mayor, motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Next item on the agenda, Madam Mayor, members of the council, is the approval of minutes for June 13th, June 20th, June 27th, July 18th, July 26th, and July 31st, 2018.
What is the pleasure of the board?
I move approval of the minutes of June 13th, June 20th, June 27th, July 18th, July 26th, and July 31st.
As amended.
As amended.
Do I have a second?
Sure.
We'll call.
Counselor Merrill?
Yes.
Counselor Casey?
Yes.
Counselor Howell?
Yes.
Counselor Libardi Jr.?
Yes.
I have a motion by Counselor Casey, a second by Counselor Libardi Jr. Thank you, Madam Mayor, motion carries. Next item, Madam Mayor, members of the council, is the mayor's appointments and reports.
I have none at this point in time.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Next item is mayor's recognitions, proclamations.
And I do have quite a few recognitions, and I do want to apologize to the La Plaza Senior Softball Team for being so far behind schedule. I am so sorry. We got a little longer than we expected, but we are very honored to have you all here and the children who participated and did such an outstanding job. So thank you from myself and the council for all the hard work and commitment that you do for the children. I know it's a lot, I used to go to the league for many years and play softball for ever. And the commitment to sport, and the children especially, because you're mentoring, developing them, you're instructing them, you're training them, everything that goes with that to ensure that your children and the athletes don't get injured is absolutely such a task for each and every one of you. So thank you for your incredible commitment, thank the students, the kids, for their incredible participation and efforts, and they did an outstanding job. And at this point in time, I'm going to have our city clerk read the names, and as she reads them, could you please come up and I will give you the recognition awards. Okay? Thank you for all that.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Recognition for La Plaza Senior Softball Team. Whereas the Las Vegas La Plaza Senior Softball Team went to regionals as the New Mexico Senior Softball Team, which included Amory Lucero, Chris Lynn Archuleta, Santiago Medrano, and Alexis Stumber. Manager Andrew Lucero and Coach Marcia Romero. And Coach Shanaya Estable. And Mayor, if I may just finish reading the recognition. Whereas the Las Vegas La Plaza Senior Softball Team traveled eighteen and a half hours to Idalia, Louisiana, to play in the Southwest Regionals, and whereas the Las Vegas La Plaza Senior Softball Team endured humid and hot temperatures while winning their first two games against Colorado 12-3 and East Texas 7-5, and whereas the Las Vegas La Plaza Senior Softball Team showed their potential and their talent for softball, and whereas the Las Vegas La Plaza Senior Softball Team played with heart and made memories they can carry with them in life, and now therefore be resolved, Mayor Tonita Gurulaini Non, Mayor of the City of Las Vegas, along with members of the governing body, hereby recognize the Las Vegas La Plaza Senior Softball Team for their dedication to the sport of softball and for representing Las Vegas and the state of New Mexico.
Thank you. Why don't you just come down here, I can't see you. You have too many, please come down. No, no, you're fine, you're fine, we'll have the council come on. Please, please, sit down. Come on down. I am so in honor of this incredible athleticism. The coaches, I know how much dedication goes into this, the athletes, how about some, I used to play softball. Yes, and I used to actually play with Barbara's sister, Bonnie, she was our pitcher. And I think that, you know, it continues, it's a tradition here in Las Vegas that we need to continue. I remember when I was growing up, we had a lot of teams, like fifteen, sixteen teams that I used to play against, and it was an amazing event even here. And then we bring in tournaments, we haven't done that in a long time, that's something that I want to put more effort into. I've talked to our city manager, and I've talked to some other individual community, we have invested a lot of money into the fields, as you know, Counselor Merrill, you asked me to, and we have come through. And we have done everything that we could to reinvigorate the softball history here, because it's huge, you know, and it's so awesome to see all of you, the coaches, your dedication, your commitment, but also the athletes, because you have to be the fans of the single day. And you know what, when you're competing at that level, I know that the workouts don't stop here. You continue weightlifting, you continue running, this is year-round, this is a year-round commitment to get to a regional or national tournament. So I want to commend you all for your incredible hard work and dedication. I am so proud of each and every one of you, and you should be too, your parents, I mean, it turns out there's a commitment to ensure that you get to your practice, that you get to those tournaments. It's amazing, and it's a lot of work. And the parents that have children that participate in this event, we know the commitment, and it's amazing to see all of you just flourish and go as far as you did, and it's only going to get better. And I want to commend you for everything that you have done, I think we're all very proud of you. Also, our sponsors of you, and anytime we see you stepping it up and doing that work, we're going to do whatever it takes to get the money to help you out and get there, okay? Congratulations, let's talk about it.
I actually want to say, out of all the seven teams that went to Louisiana, Louisiana was the host team, and they were, we were told that we were the most respectful team out of all the seven teams.
Thank you. Congratulations again, next year, we're going to get it, we're going to get it, correct? Yeah.
Yes, absolutely. Please.
I would like to thank the community for stepping up and helping these girls. We had a week and a half to raise the money.
I know.
They raised a little over $12,000 in a week.
That's amazing.
So the city of Las Vegas really stepped up and helped us.
Awesome, good job, good job.
One more picture.
It's a lot of work there. The group that I told you about, I continue to get involved in the high school, it's all the same. But I don't think I'll be able to.
One more of a good picture, Jennifer.
Ready? Next item on the agenda is public input. The first one is Mr. Floyd Archuleta on workforce summit.
Thank you very much.
Welcome, gentlemen, welcome.
With me is Mr. Mike Adams, I'm sure that you all know Mike. We're here tonight, I represent the Northern Area Local Workforce Development Board. Counselor Howell is also part of our board of directors. And we're here tonight to let you know of an initiative that we have put together to have a workforce summit here in Las Vegas on September 13th and 14th. And we have been working with Mr. Adams, and of course, the mayor has been part of our meetings as well, and of course, Counselor Howell. But we're here to ask you for your support, your participation in our summit. We have several sponsors that have come forth and agreed to work with us in being sponsors. Los Angeles National Laboratory is one, as well as one of their major contractors, which is Compa Industries. They are having a situation where they're having problems finding a workforce, the ability to fill their vacancies. So there's going to be quite a few opportunities that will be available during that time for, not only for the job seekers, but also for the employers. So I'll let Mike expand a little bit as far as the details of the summit.
Well, again, what we try to do is work with a lot of the employers in town and in our area, and actually, all of northern New Mexico, to be able to come to this. We've, we're blessed to be able to use the auditorium, the new auditorium at Luna Community College, which I think if you all, if you all focus on those seats, about 750 people. We also have a back room for about another 10,000 square feet that we can put tables. We're already getting probably close to probably thirty, forty different companies that want to come to this and see what Luna has to offer, what Highlands has to offer, what everybody else in the community has to offer as far as jobs and employment. Talking with Councilman Howell today in Motto, we had a meeting, and we're hoping to bring on a few more of the bigger business or even local businesses to come to this meeting, so we can talk about what we can do for employment. Working with workforce, I have for years, I worked with them at Luna, I work with them now at Economic Development. We probably get close to placing one person a day with workforce in the SET program. They either put them into the program as far as CNAs, or now we're doing a lot of medical encoding, we do the heavy equipment, we do the CDL. So what we want to do is make, and let everybody know what the resources are, and that's sort of why we did this thing. We actually had a great meeting last week with the president, U N M, you were their mayor, she wants to be, and she wants to come to this meeting and see what we're doing and how we're doing it. So we're inviting her as one of the speakers with President Minner and President Serna, to see what they have and what they want and what they could do for us. Already made a deal with BHI to help them with their psychology and psychiatry at BHI, so U N M and them are already partnering up. So again, I want to thank you for your support and try to get as many people as we can to fit into that auditorium and make this a specialty for Las Vegas. I had to actually twist Floyd's arm to bring it here and not take it to Farmington or leave it in Espanola, so I thought it'd be a great thing for the metal city or for Las Vegas.
Thank you very much, Floyd, thank you so much for all that you do for the community. I know you're very engaged with the community, and we appreciate that, and I also want to make a firm commitment to you today with regards to sponsorship, and Amory will take care of that, of course.
Thank you, Mayor.
And anything else we can do, of course, we're here to help.
It'll be a two-day event. The first day will be for information exchange, providing information and ideas on how we accomplish what we're setting out to do. The next day will be a job fair, where we will have our employers available to, some people are actually hiring people on that day, so it'll be, we're excited about it. But we definitely want the city to be, and I know you've already said that you'd like to be a co-sponsor.
Yes.
And so we ask you for your help in promoting the event. We ask the community here also to please join us on that day. There's no cost involved, so everything's free, we'll have lunch available for you, so please join us.
Thank you.
Anything else? That's all. I would again, thanks again, and I think it's a great thing to bring probably 250, 300 people from out of town back to Vegas to see what we have.
Awesome, thank you very much, thank you, gentlemen.
Just one.
Counselor Howell.
Thirty seconds, thirty seconds. I really am excited about this workforce summit, but I understand that the city of Las Vegas has many openings in our workforce here, so I think it would be great if we can have a booth at the summit. And I think there's, from what I understand, there's no cost for the booth.
There's no cost involved.
Yeah, so that would be wonderful.
I should say that we may be sending you a formal request for a contribution from the city.
Oh, okay.
And also the registrations, and we have a survey for employers and businesses will be online, we'll use Survey Monkey, we'll probably use the same thing as far as registration. So we'll get all those registrations automatic, we'll have name tags for tables, or whomever, or however you want to, the situation, it calls for as far as businesses or just wanting to come to the meeting.
In terms of publicizing the event, we did want to ask you for permission to hang a banner.
You have the banner that you're doing right now?
Yes, and what we can do in addition to that, we have Virginia, who's an expert in marketing, she'll eat blast it out. That'll work out perfectly.
And we may have a banner also that we can put away.
Absolutely, perfect.
Right over Bridge Street.
Okay.
So anything you can do to help us publicize, we need.
We're here to help, and I think this is very important.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, thank you for giving Floyd and Monkey. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
The next person on the public input is Cindy Thomas Apodaca, La Oreona Domestic Violent Services.
Good evening. I'd like to just first thank you for giving this time, and I'm just kind of introducing myself right now. This is a new nonprofit that I just formed, I've been the one that's been spearheading it, but you know, I do have a couple board members already, founding board members. But what I'm asking at this time, if I can have maybe some more formal meetings with the mayor, with the city managers, because I need some financial support right now. I'm looking for office space, because it's in such beginning stages of the nonprofit that this, I figure probably the next year, year and a half is going to be mostly fundraising. So I need, and I need help, and possibly I'm asking also the county to give me help with office space, and so I can, I've been running out of my house, so this is becoming difficult, I can't, I can't have my house and my, you know, and the nonprofit. So I'm asking for your support, I'm asking maybe some formal meetings to maybe go forward and see what we can do to help maybe fund an office space.
And that's wonderful, a new nonprofit, I think that's great, but you will have to submit a proposal with deliverables to the city, and you will have the community development director assist you with that process.
Okay, sounds good. And then I just sort of had like sort of an introduction letter that I'll give to each of the council members and everybody here, just sort of my contact information. Yep, and then I'll just be waiting maybe to get maybe your secretary, maybe start arranging me maybe for me to come and formally meet.
What I would recommend is you get ahold of our city manager, and she will give you the point of contact, which is Virginia Marufo. Once you have your proposal with deliverables, then you bring it to them, and they'll work with you to see if that's something that's acceptable.
Okay, so great.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Apodaca. The next person is Mr. Marshall.
Ms. Apodaca.
I'm sorry.
I'd like to invite you to Seminole Family and Community Health Council meeting, which are held on the fourth Tuesday of every month, when we meet at the Public Health Office. And one of our priorities is.
Is that where, next to?
Next to the cemetery, yes, uh-huh.
State Hospital, yes.
We'll be meeting there, and one of our priorities for the health council is domestic violence. So if you would like to come, we'd like to have you give us just a little brief.
Sure, and then, so what date will that be on sign up?
Whatever the last Tuesday of this month is.
Do you have a calendar? And then I'll put it, I'll make it.
Twenty, the 28th?
The 28th, from 10 to 12.
10 to 12, okay.
Great.
Thank you very much.
Okay, let's continue. The next person is Mr. Marshall Poole on animal shelter, July report. Mr. Poole?
Madam Mayor and council.
Good evening.
Due to the lateness of the hour, I'll speed through a lot of this, so this is really a report on July. We took in 151 animals, 88 dogs, including 40 puppies, 59 cats, including 31 kittens. We returned 17 of them to their owner guardians. Again, this is a real problem, that we don't know who these animals belong to, the more we can identify them, the better. We adopted 23 animals locally. We trapped 18 feral or wild cats and took them for spay and neuter, brought them back, and either returned them to the community if the citizens want of them returned, or adopted them out as barn cats. We transported 56 dogs to five different agencies in Colorado and other places for adoption. Forty-six dogs came in unidentified, 86 dogs had no evidence of rabies vaccination. We transported 13 citizen-owned dogs and cats for low-cost spay and neuter in Santa Fe. That's for $25. We take them to Santa Fe, we get them spayed and neutered at the hospital, we bring them back, they have post-surgical medications, and rabies vaccination, and a chip, all for 25 hours. We also transported 15 strays and owner-surrendered animals, owners surrendered the animals to us for that same service. Couple of additional items, we got a $1,000 gift from Bulldog Specialty Breed Association for Bulldogs and Bully Breeds for veterinary care. And a woman in Houston, I don't know how she found out about us, but she gave us a $10,000 gift through the VCA Animal Hospital in Santa Fe. We will use that for veterinary care for animals that need it in the city. We also got, through a private donor, through Animal Humane New Mexico, we got funding to do two pet fairs, pet health fairs in 2019. And what this would look like is, we would have it at a park, we're targeting maybe 50 to 100 pets the first time we do this fair. Two of our board members, and the shelter director, and three other staff and volunteers attended a one-day workshop this weekend to learn how to do this. But we would have one to two vets there at the park, they would get a rabies vaccine, parvotistemper and order della disease shots, as well as a microchip registered in their name for $5 a pet. So we would do up to one to two pets per citizen, and we're targeting 50 to 100 this first time, and we're hoping to do more in succeeding times. So that was a great grant, I think that will add to our services next year, and then we'll figure out how to fund it for succeeding years. So that's the end of my report. We, as you know, are in the process of renegotiating the contract with the city, and we look forward to continuing to better the animals and the citizens here in Las Vegas.
Thank you for your hard work, Mr. Poole.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Poole. The last person is Mr. Sanchez.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening, Mr. Sanchez.
I want to have one comment to make, and it's a solid appreciation, I would say to our city manager that I have been trying to get that intersection on North Gonzales and Valencia Street fixed for 12 years, 15 years, I believe, when Henry Sanchez was mayor, nothing had ever been done until now. Now that we have this lady here, a city manager, a lot of things have been getting done in Las Vegas, and I can't thank anybody but her and her administration, or her helper, or whoever it is. And I appreciate that, and I'm sure that the whole community appreciates it, too bad it was only half done. It would be nice if we could get that whole intersection totally repaired.
Mr. Sanchez, be grateful.
As I say, a little bit of something is better than a whole lot of nothing.
Thank you, Mr. Sanchez. I think that's a thank you, I don't know.
Progress.
Thank you, Mr. Sanchez, have a good day.
Thank you. Okay, let's continue.
The next item on the agenda is the city manager's report, and I'll make this report fairly short. We've been busy, the city of Las Vegas has really been busy, June and July, we hosted baseball tournaments, we hosted a six-day event with the fiestas. We, it was wonderful that we had all of our hotels and motels sold out, and actually, we have, we have reservations being made for next year's event. I understand that our event is one of the nicest events in New Mexico, so we're real happy with that, and the staff is working diligently on the fiestas for next year. That wasn't the main, those weren't only the, the only events we had, we had library, museum, and community development events. Towards the end of July, we hosted the motorcycle rally. The 720th troops were also honored in early August, this was hosted by our local artist, Gonzalo, and assisted by city crews. And currently filming is taking place, and so you will see Roswell, New Mexi, Roswell all over the city, but especially around the plaza, and we saw that today. Channel 4 is featuring us, we were supposed to be featured last night, they've changed it over to Friday, Friday? Friday night, they will be, they came for a day, spent a whole day. Friday night, they will be, they came for a day, spent a whole day, filmed and they'll be back for the light parade as well. We were, they just, they just really, really liked the area and visited a lot of places in the, within Las Vegas. We haven't stopped from working. Utilities will be bringing presentations to mayor and council. It'll be a discussion regarding the Peterson Dam project. We want to also start the process of assessing the rate, utility rate structure. We're continuing to review the franchise agreements by our city clerk. She has also, she is also working on job descriptions and the pay plan and so those reports will all come back to mayor and council for review and then approval if necessary. An asset management plan is being looked at for our city roads. That's something that we haven't done at all and so we're going to take those roads, we're going to take those in phases and get a complete asset management plan completed for the, for the city of Las Vegas. And also, we're also seeking funding for the comprehensive master plan as well. The ICIP plan is being worked on and it may, it's almost ready to have, have mayor and council review and so we will be bringing that back to you. And we've scheduled a meeting with the Animal Welfare Coalition and the citizens of Las Vegas. That is going to take place on August the 21st, which is Tuesday at 4:30 PM in the council chamber, in the council chambers. DOT has kicked off the South Grand Avenue project, that's ongoing. People's Fair is on August the 25th at Carnegie Library and scheduled abatement that Mr. Romero has, has, is very interested in. That will be taking place on the 27th and it's on Sapoio and Chavez Street, I believe. And it is a NISO, it does need to get addressed and so we'll be addressing that as well. That concludes my report.
Thank you very much. I want to thank you and the staff, Ms. Gagos, for the incredible hard work that you have put in, not just this year, but historically in your career and, but this year you're tackling it a little extra hard, so I want to thank you and your staff. Thank you very much for everything.
Thank you. We have also, we have Ms. Conavega on the finance report.
Good evening, Madam Mayor.
Good evening, Ms. Gagos.
Members of the council. The revenue report presented tonight is for the first month of our fiscal year 2019. The one month represents 8.33% of the budget. Total collections for property taxes, $19,504. Dollars of gross receipts, taxes of, would you like for me to read each line item or just the grand total?
Just the total, is it a question?
Grand total collections for July were $971,578. Total expenditures for the general fund, $823,247. Note, you will notice that the department administration has been removed and to comply with the DFA chart of accounts, finance has created three different departments for, that replaces administration, which is governing body, the mayor department and the managers' Total revenues received or accrued for, for July, $1,528,946 for the four enterprise funds. Recreation. Total revenues collected, including the transfer from the general fund for July, $48,026 and total expenditures, $58,196.
Okay, questions, comments?
I just had one question about lodges tax and was that confusion of when it started and did that ever get taken care of?
Yes, sir. It took effect August 1st and-
So was confusion between the-
Correct. When it was to be implemented additionally, the correct forms were provided to all the lodging establishments for reporting purposes.
Any other questions? I only had one, Tana, and I don't want to drag this on, but the enterprise fund is slightly lower than expected.
Pardon?
The enterprise fund is slightly lower than projected.
On the revenues? What would bring that down would be the, the gas because it being summer and the major collections for gas are rather, a cold occur in the winter months. Just pretty much like the property taxes that are budgeted in the general fund.
Thank you, Madam.
Thank you, Tana. The next item are the consent agenda items.
I need to tell you more, Madam Mayor.
A little approval of the consent agenda items and request that they be read into the record proper by the city clerk.
Certainly, Councilor. Consent item number one, approval of out-of-state travel to Sacramento, California for one certified police officer to attend training. Item two, approval of resolution number 1829 to apply for funding offered through New Mexico Department of Game and Fish to rehabilitate the shooting range through the Las Vegas Police Department. Item three, approval to accept pass-through funding from the New Mexico Department of Information Technology E-911 Grant Fund for the Las Vegas Police Department. And finally, item number four, approval of resolution number 1833, City of Las Vegas Meadow City expressed intent to apply for New Mexico DOT grant 5311.
Do you have a motion for it? Do you have any?
Second.
Counselor Uli Badi Jr.?
Yes.
Counselor Romero?
Yes.
Counselor Casey?
Yes.
Counselor Howell?
Yes.
Have a motion by Counselor Casey, a second by Counselor Howell. Thank you, Madam Mayor, motion carries.
Thank you very much. Ms. Gagos?
We now go to business items. Madam Mayor, members of the council, number one, conduct a public hearing and approve, disapprove of application, disapproval, disapproval of application for a transfer of location of interlocal dispenser license with on-premises consumption only with patio service for Chamisa Hills Golf and Country Club LLC DBA to the historic El Fidel Hotel.
I need a motion to go into public hearing.
I move that we go into public hearing.
Do I have a second?
Second.
We'll call.
Counselor Uli Badi Jr.?
Yes.
Counselor Howell?
Yes.
Counselor Casey?
Yes.
Counselor Romero?
Yes.
Have a motion by Counselor Casey, a second by Counselor Howell. Thank you, Madam Mayor, motion carries.
Swearing in. Do we have anyone here that we need to swear in today?
Is there anyone in the audience that wish to speak on this issue? Please stand and come forward. If not, go ahead and speak on the issue. Good evening, Mayor and Council. So tonight we have Chamisa Hills Golf and Country Club. They're the applicant that is requesting a transfer of location and this is on the interlocal dispenser liquor license and they're doing business as the historic El Fidel Hotel, which of course is located on 500 Douglas Avenue. We've attached, you have all the information, we've met the publication requirements as well as the zoning requirements and staff recommendation is to approve the item. I'll stand for any questions at this time.
Questions, comments? Hey, what is the pleasure of the board? We need to first of all adopt the record proper.
Right.
I move that we adopt the record proper.
Do I have a second?
Second.
We'll call.
Counselor Romero?
Yes.
Counselor Casey?
Yes.
Counselor Howell?
Yes.
Counselor Uli Badi Jr.?
Yes.
Have a motion by Counselor Casey, a second by Counselor Howell. Thank you, Madam Mayor, motion carries.
Thank you very much. I need a motion to close public hearing and reconvene to regular session.
I move that we close public hearing and reconvene to regular session.
Do I have a second?
Second.
We'll call.
Counselor Casey?
Yes.
Counselor Romero?
Yes.
Counselor Howell?
Yes.
Counselor Uli Badi Jr.?
Yes.
Have a motion by Counselor Casey, a second by Counselor Howell. Thank you, Madam Mayor, motion carries.
Thank you very much, we're in a regular session. What's the pleasure of the board?
Madam Chair, I move approval of the application for the transfer of location of interlocal dispenser liquor license with on-premise consumption only with patio service for Chamisa Hills Golf Club Golf and Country Club LLC doing business as the historic El Fidel Hotel.
Okay, do I have a second? We'll call.
Counselor Uli Badi Jr.?
Yes.
Counselor Romero?
Yes.
Counselor Casey?
Yes.
Counselor Howell?
Yes.
Have a motion by Counselor Casey, a second by Counselor Howell. Thank you, Madam Mayor, motion carries.
Thank you very much.
The next item on the agenda, Madam Mayor, members of the council, is to conduct a public hearing and approval, disapproval to adopt ordinance 18-06, amendment to the official zoning map for property.
I need a motion to go into public hearing.
I move that we go into public hearing.
Do I have a second? We'll call. Two seconds on this.
Counselor Uli Badi Jr.?
Yes.
Counselor Romero?
Yes.
Counselor Howell?
Yes.
Counselor Casey?
Yes.
Have a motion by Counselor Casey, a second by Counselor Badi Jr. and Counselor Howell. Thank you, Madam Mayor, motion carries.
Swearing in.
Anyone who would wish to speak on this issue, please stand and come forward and raise your right hand. Repeat after me. Hi.
Hi.
State your name for the record.
I'm Ms. Marufo.
Swear to tell the truth.
I swear to tell the truth.
During my testimony to council committee.
During my testimony to council committee.
Thank you very much. What do you mean?
Good evening, Mayor, Councilors. So tonight what we're looking into doing is a rezoning for the property located at 2023 Eighth Street from a residential one, an R2, to a multifamily residential zoning from the, sorry, from R1 to an R2 change. And it's basically, what it is, is that it's one house and the owner had split it into two and they were operating it as a multifamily. And the daughter currently took over and so what she wants to do is just bring the zoning into compliance with the way they've been operating the property.
Okay, questions, comments? Okay, do you have a question?
Was it the landowner now that, did we catch it or was it the landlord?
The landlord, owner that currently is, is taking the property.
Any other question? Okay, we need, oh, sorry.
Thank you. Ms. Marufo, was there any protest in this?
No.
Nothing, no protest?
Okay.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, we need to adopt the record proper.
Madam Mayor, I move that we adopt the record proper.
Second.
We'll call.
Counselor Howell?
Yes.
Counselor Romero?
Yes.
Counselor Casey?
Yes.
Counselor Uli Badi Jr.?
Yes.
Have a motion by Counselor Casey, a second by Counselor Uli Badi Jr. Thank you, Madam Mayor, motion carries.
Hi, thank you very much. I need a motion to close the public hearing and reconvene to regular session.
Madam Mayor, I move that we close the public hearing and move into regular session.
Do I have a second?
Second.
We'll call.
Counselor Romero?
Yes.
Counselor Howell?
Yes.
Counselor Uli Badi Jr.?
Yes.
Counselor Casey?
Yes.
Have a motion by Counselor Casey, a second by Counselor Howell. Thank you, Madam Mayor, motion carries.
What is the pleasure of the board?
Madam Mayor?
Counselor, Madam?
I move for approval to adopt ordinance 1806, amendment to official zoning map after the assumptions happening.
Okay, we'll call.
Counselor Howell?
Yes.
Counselor Uli Badi Jr.?
Yes.
Counselor Casey?
Yes.
Counselor Romero?
Yes.
Have a motion by Counselor Romero, a second by Counselor Casey. Thank you, Madam Mayor, motion carries.
Thank you very much.
The next item on the agenda, Madam Mayor, members of the council, is approval, disapproval of resolution number 18-34, repealing and replacing resolution 18-13 to include authorizing the sale of city-owned property as per attached legal description and plat and known as a portion of transportation department property located at 500 Railroad Avenue to Mr. Alan Alfeld, owner of the Castaneda Hotel.
Right, so, Mayor, councilors, this one is basically what we did is we did come to you with resolution 18-13, which was the parking for on-road there in the front, but what we've done is we've taken it back to include the property that's a part of transportation department as when it originally came to us, the plans were off by about 15 feet and so we, Alan wanted to make sure that he had enough to complete the parking space and in order to do that, he wants to purchase that 15 feet right there along the transportation department so that he can complete his parking space. And of course, as we mentioned before, it will also be part of the city that would be able to utilize that parking area and we would have the two entrances for fire to get in and out if they need to for any emergencies.
Okay, questions, comments? Thank you very much. So, no questions?
No. So this property was ours and we sold it?
No, we haven't sold it yet. We have to adopt the resolution in order to be able to complete the sale, but we didn't want to complete the prior sale because we didn't want to split it into two. So what we're doing is we're just including the prior resolution into this one so that we can do it as one complete sale.
Okay, so once it's sold, the maintenance would be responsible with the-
Yes.
Buyer.
What is the pleasure of the board? Any other questions?
Madam Mayor?
Counselor Casey?
I move that we approve resolution number 18-34, repealing and replacing resolution 18-13 to include and authorizing the sale of the city-owned property as per attached legal description, which is in our packet, and plat and known as a portion of transportation department property located at 500 Railroad Avenue to Mr. Alan Alfeld, owner of the Castaneda Hotel.
Do I have a second?
Second.
We'll call.
Counselor Uli Badi Jr.?
Yes.
Counselor Casey?
Yes.
Counselor Howell?
Yes.
Counselor Romero?
Yes.
Have a motion by Counselor Casey, a second by Counselor Uli Badi Jr. Thank you, Madam Mayor, motion carries.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Virginia.
Thank you.
I noticed a little-
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council.
Thank you, Anna.
Number four, approval, disapproval of resolution number 18-35, authorizing acceptance of grant offers from the Federal Aviation Administration and the New Mexico Department of Transportation Aviation Division for a project at the Las Vegas Municipal Airport. We have Mr. Danny Gudin, Ms. John O'Leary.
Council members, we're seeking the approval of resolution 1835 to install the pack piece up to the airport. And the resolution is supported to the governing body assuring the sponsor matching funds, which is 5%, the state is 5%, 90% is the FAA.
Questions, comments?
So-
Counselor Casey?
Thank you. Our matching was $6,000 or whatever it was.
Yes, the total grant is for $269,139. The city match is $13,457 and the state match is $13,457 and I believe this grant is for improvement of lighting at the airport. It's going to give a little bit more guidance for the airplanes that land and so FAA has awaiting the application so that they can move forward to award the grant and then we'll bring back the bids that have been-
For approval.
For approval from mayor and council as well.
Yeah, I was, my next question was going to be what exactly is a precision approach path indicator?
I had to look it up. I did, I looked it up and it is that it's to improve the lighting, which is better for the airport action.
Yeah, I'm really happy that we are making improvements at the airport because I think that we have a wonderful resource there that has not been utilized enough in the past. We need to move forward with everything we can do to improve the airport as much as possible and I want to thank you gentlemen for bringing this to us here at the council and continuing to do your good work that you're doing now.
Thank you.
Okay, do I have a second?
Madam Mayor? I just, out of curiosity, how many, how many flights coming to Vegas and how many during the day, how many during the night? We're manned eight to five, so we don't really have an accurate count as far as a 24-hour period. We have to have somebody there all the time. In general, if you take a yearly average, we're averaging probably eight to 10 a day. So that, that's, that's about average for us.
A lot of times for the fires or for other events that happen, we'll get, we'll, these gentlemen will get a call and we'll man longer periods of time if, if in fact we need to man them. A lot of times for forest fires and other things, that's, that nature.
Military also.
Military does, does-
Medevac.
Does, lab here as well.
We do medevac as well, so. Okay, I'm just curious.
Any other questions? Also, before we move on to the motion, is I want to commend you, Ms. Gagos, because you're working on a new proposal for the airport, so that's upcoming.
Yes, that'll be-
Four hundred thousand, thanks as well. Thank you very much. Please, what is the pleasure of the board?
Madam Mayor? I move approval of resolution number eighteen dash thirty-five, authorizing our acceptance of grant offers from the FAA and the New Mexico Department of Transportation Aviation Division for a project for the municipal airport here in Las Vegas for the precision path indicator.
Good. Second, do we have a second?
Second.
Counselor Romero?
Yes.
Counselor Howell?
Yes.
Counselor Uli Vadi Jr.?
Yes.
Counselor Casey?
Yes.
Have a motion by Counselor Casey, a second by Counselor Howell. Thank you, Madam Mayor. Motion carries.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you, Jim.
Thank you.
The next item on the agenda, Madam Mayor, members of the council, is councilor's reports.
Counselor Mayor.
Couple were answered today. I had the question on the Chavez and Saviel property. One of the major ones, and I know I've received a call, is the weed issue and code enforcement. I know that we're short-staffed, but I just want to bring it publicly, you know, that I'm bringing it to you and we're not, you know, and I know there's been concerns, oh, you guys aren't doing what you're supposed to. But do we still only have that one code enforcement officer or has one been hired?
Yes, we have Levi and as well as Virginia because Virginia goes out quite a bit.
So there's some certain areas I can let you know?
Yes, please. I was going to ask you if you can just give me a call or text me those areas that you have issues with. I try to get them out. I try to, we try to, we're trying to address them as quickly as we can.
And that's what I've explained. I know for shorthand that animal control is another one that I know.
We have two people coming on board, I believe, with animal control. Am I correct? Yes. So that'll help us a little bit. But if you do have certain areas that you want us to address, please let me know.
Okay. And then the last but not least, you know, school starting cross...
Crosswalk?
Crosswalks and stuff like that.
All right.
I think you're working on that already with the school.
I believe so. The public facilities has been out with crosswalks, but it might be, it might be a certain area that we haven't addressed. So by all means, just give me a call.
Along with by the schools specifically.
Yes, okay. All right. Thank you, Ms. Romero.
Thank you. I'm glad to know that we're working on the ICIP because as I read the minutes, it did say that we were supposed to get the list of the ICIP projects so that we could prioritize them.
Yes.
Yeah, and it's, my understanding also that, and you mentioned this in your report, Ms. Gagos, that we're working on an asset management plan? And a comprehensive master plan too, or is that coming later?
No, we're going to try to work on the, what I'd like to do is work on the asset management plan, which will cost us well over a hundred thousand dollars. So what we've decided to do is to phase it and name, maybe get ten main roads assessed so that we can apply for different funding. And then we'll continue with the different phases as we identify resources. Now, the comprehensive master plan does need to be done. DFA does have funding for municipalities that apply. So we're in the process of applying for that so that we can update that as well. And so we'll be working on those two projects pretty quickly.
Okay, because I think the master plan hasn't been looked at like in ten years or so. It's been a long time.
And that is actually what's kind of hindering us from applying for funds. And so we need to get that comprehensive master plan in place. And we also need to get the asset management.
What's the shelf life on the master plan?
It's a five-year plan. I think ours is ten to twelve years old, I believe. But anyway, we're going to get that completed, updated as we believe.
That's pretty old. Also, it's my understanding that the ICIP priorities must be shovel-ready?
Yes, as a matter of fact, that has been, actually, it ended up being, I believe Robert and I talked just yesterday, twenty-three or twenty-four projects because they do need to be shovel-ready. They don't want a wish list from us, but they want shovel-ready projects as well. Yes.
And I have a question for our city attorney, if I may. If something is not addressed in the charter, a legal issue is not addressed in the charter, do we have like a default? Do we just go back to state statutes to look at those? Or what do we do for?
Yes. State statute would address, or I suppose it could address something that's not in the charter. And it would, it would hopefully answer whatever's not put in there, or ordinances as well.
Okay, and the reason I ask that is because at the last meeting that we had to appoint the city attorney and the police chief, the charter doesn't really address what happens if they're not approved. And so I looked at municipal code section three dash eleven dash five, and that says that we need to... It says specifically, at the organizational meeting, which that's what that was called, of the governing body, which shall be scheduled pursuant to section three dash eight dash thirty-three and NMSA nineteen seventy-eight of the municipal election code, the mayor shall submit for confirmation by the governing body the names of persons who shall be appointed officers of the municipality. If the governing body fails to confirm any person as an appointed official or employee of the municipality, the mayor at the next regular meeting of the governing body shall submit the name of another person to fill the appointed officer to be employed by the municipality. I asked that at the last meeting, and today is the next regular meeting. And so nothing has been brought before this council as an appointee. And so my question is, are we violating the municipal code by not having people here to be appointed this evening? Since that's what the law says.
Let me respond to that. I've already received a legal opinion, and we are not violating anything. I will be addressing that to the council when I discuss that with Counselor Casey. The summation of the entire fourth page opinion states that as the mayor of the city of Las Vegas, you have the power to bring the appointment to certain, of certain individuals to the council for requested approval on more than one occasion. You are not limited to the provision of section three eleven five NMSA nineteen seventy-eight. I will provide you a full, and I did explain that to you, Counselor Casey. It's not like you didn't know.
You didn't, never talked to me. You did say that at the last meeting. However, I anticipated that we would have had that in writing prior to this meeting because you knew that that was a concern.
But if I made this statement...
I also would like to know who, what attorney did you consult?
Danielle Smith, of course.
And I still have a real problem with that because Danielle Smith is not your personal attorney. She is the attorney for this council, for the entire governing body.
Well, actually, we have two attorneys right now because you didn't confirm and failed to confirm. So essentially, we don't have an attorney at this point.
Well, but I don't think that Ms. Smith should be doing work specifically for you. And I've mentioned that before.
Actually, it's not specifically for me. It's specifically for the city of Las Vegas and to continue the operations of the city because you failed to approve. And bottom line is that if there's no vagueness or ambiguity at this point in time within the charter, which there isn't with regards to the appointments, and we do not refer back to the NMSA regulations, which are consistent with a mayor, council, formal government, not the heading of the charter. That is the rule. But it's more in-depth. I'll provide you with that information.
I would appreciate that very much.
Okay.
I have another question.
Let's continue. Counselor Howell.
Thank you, Mayor. Ms. Gagos, I wanted to thank you for following up on some of my concerns that I listed to you. I think that the illegal dumping concern is very troubling because we've had a lot of moisture and then we had a lot of heat. So right now, what's, those two entities are causing a lot of smell in that area because mattresses or other items that are there. So we really need to, you know, find out who that property owner is, et cetera. Because I really appreciate you really getting on that, so.
We'll continue, I'll continue to work on that with that code enforcement.
Also, Peggy Lane, I really want to thank you for, has they been, have they been already installed the sign?
I apologize. I didn't go out this afternoon and I should have because I knew you were going to ask. And I thought I better have an answer and I didn't. But I'll drive out and see. We were going to just install something that said stop sign ahead of, ahead. And so we were going to go ahead and get that done and then see if we could get together with the property owner and cut around that stop sign because that is an obstruction. It really is.
Yeah.
And so we're going to continue to do that, but we'll continue to work on it. That was the idea that public facilities have.
Thank you. And I also, lastly, I mentioned about Keys Park, the baseball field there. Looking at the structures there, they're very, very in need of a lot of sprucing up, painting. There's rotten wood and there's, it just doesn't look appealing. And when we have games there with parents there and tourists there watching the families and the kids, they see just awful things there. So I really think if it's our property, the city's property, then we need to really keep it maintained. So I really appreciate you looking into that and thank you for that. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Counselor Howell, Counselor Uli Vadi.
Thank you, Ms. Gagos. You've done a very good job for, outside all the weeds and trees and...
We're trying to stay with it.
A lot of work. There's been a lot of work done over there, all over the city. And I just want to thank all the businesses that had come into Las Vegas, I think five of them. I wish them great success and hopefully we can keep them here for a lot of years.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And there's loves or brand opening on... Twenty-second? Well...
We received an email.
Yes, did you? Okay. It's from eleven till twelve?
And you did send out an email?
Yes, we did. And we'll send out another one with, if, did everybody receive it?
I received it.
I got it.
Okay, thank you, Counselor.
Madam Mayor, if I can ask this question and maybe if the manager is, can you get us a total of what we paid the attorneys since we've had an intern? Maybe this fiscal year, I mean, up until now?
It's under the contract amount, correct?
Right. It's under the sixty, but yeah, we can get, we can get it by individual attorney if you like. Yes.
Maybe if you can give me from January till today?
Yes.
Just curious.
If you could provide that for all of us, that would be...
I'll be glad to do so. All right.
Thank you very much. Any other questions?
Just a comment?
Yes, yes.
The ribbon-cutting ceremony is on the twenty-second between eleven and...
Twelve, yes.
Just kept where I am.
Yeah, got you. Okay. No other business to discuss? I mean, a motion to adjourn?
Madam Mayor, I make a motion to adjourn.
Counselor Romero?
Yes.
Counselor Casey?
Yes.